This graduating class, they were sophomores at the onset of the pandemic. And they were unable to complete service learning until they returned. Tonight's board resolution provides a 130 graduation option for 30 seniors. Who were carefully considered by the high school team because they were impacted adversely by the COVID worldwide pandemic. Although we know students struggled academically and socially emotionally. These thirty, these thirty children in particular were impacted. And we have a unique opportunity to assist these students. Specifically, California Education Code, Section 51225.3. Sets a minimum graduation requirement for local education agencies. LEAs like Clover City Unified, that's our local education agency. And it states that all pupils receiving a diploma of graduation from a California high school must have completed all courses listed in the board resolution as it is presented, which is a minimum of 130. And that, that is the minimum that the state deems needs to happen. So this is a supportive measure in passing this resolution that CCUSD can use in order to support this ed code. So students, so, so that we can afford our children the opportunity to enter a community college and graduate with a diploma. These students, overall, the 30 students, 25 from the high school, five that are in I Academy. They represent this configuration more or less. So there are 30 kiddos and 28% of them are African American. 3% of them are Asian Indian. 41% of them are Hispanic, Latinx. 24% of them are white. 3% are two or more races. 52% of them are male. 48% of the students are female. 10% are students with disabilities. 3% are English learners. 21% of the kiddos are reclassified. The socio-economically disadvantaged because the numbers could, kids could be in more than one group here. We need to get that, that information to you. And then gifted and talented students, that's 3%. So we have a moral imperative that is ed code appropriate and obligation to support these 30 impacted students in any way we can while meeting the state ed code that's in place to support our children. Thank you for your consideration.
We're gonna start with Isadora.
Thank you so much. I just have one question. I just want to, it's a clarifying question. Is this the last year that we, the last cohort of students who were affected adversely by the COVID-19 pandemic? That we will be passing alternate graduation requirements?
If I could.
Point of order, excuse me, I apologize. This is an action item, so we need a motion. Can I get a motion? I'll move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Now we proceed with discussion.
So currently we're looking at class of 2023, graduating class this coming June. They started in-person their freshman year. And then they went straight on to distance learning. For a year and a half, almost two years of disruption. We are looking at the possibility of also doing something, not quite the same thing. But should the numbers turn out to be harmful? Class of 2024. These are the freshmen starting out on long distance. But so far, the data seem to be stabilizing and we're not looking at vast number of students not making the grade. So the state guidance to us is that put every flexibility in place to support 2023 students. We don't know whether we might need to do this again for 2024. But now that we know more about the impact that had on our students, maybe we couldn't spin in enough support to prevent that from happening. But I cannot be saying absolutely that this is the last class graduating class that we would do this. Because we did have, the freshman year of class 2024 was completely on distance learning. So that, that's a bit of a wait and sees for us.
Loretto?
I think I alluded to this earlier about, you know, if we are relaxing our, if we don't relax it. You know, is there, for one thing, I know that you're saying that ed code is supporting it. But if you can explain, and I have more questions after this, so this is just part one. Explain to me, are we under a legal obligation to relax, to, to, to relax it? Whereas last year with AB104, we were, we were, right? So can you talk a little bit about that?
We have the flexibility at our own choosing. We're not mandated to do so. This is now on us to, to put in the last measure of support and flexibility for our students. If we do not, if we decided not to go to this point. Based on the number that I received from the high school is that we're looking at possibly 88 students not making graduation.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight.
She, she said 30 before, five from I Academy and 25 from the high school.
I'm sorry. These are the 88 who are short on credits and a whole bunch of them are making it up. So I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong. It's about 25 plus five, so 30 students. And so we're looking at the flexibility to allow 30 students the chance to graduate from, from our school with their diploma.
So, you know, piggybacking on that is, you know, does, when we're graduating a student before they're meeting our own standards, and this doesn't even have to do with the A through G standards, which, remember Isadora was talking about earlier about how we want to see whether or not they're, you know, for your college ready or, or what. But, you know, it's more like, what are we doing like for them if we are pushing them to graduate versus is student retention or a five-year plan, you know, presented as an alternative ever? What are the outcomes that our students are getting when we are kind of pushing them out? Are they not even ready for a two-year college? Like what, what are their choices? And, you know, and in other states, they're, you know, be taking another year makes them more prepared for a four-year or even to whatever their next step is. So I don't want, I am not a believer that, you know, relaxing the guidelines is always the best thing for every student. And to really give depth to that, some of my questions are more so, how far are they off from meeting, meeting these requirements? Is it only the service? Or is it also something else that we were, that we failed in helping them along the way? Regardless of the, the pandemic? Like what, where, where are we seeing a pattern, if any? And that's really where I need to understand, like where are we falling, falling short? And where, at what point did we figure this out? Was it just now because now they're looking at graduation? Or was this already identified last year? And where did we not, when were we not able to, you know, provide summer school credits and all of that? And so I would like to hear more about that. And I don't know if you're prepared to answer some of those things tonight.
I, I could briefly, addressing our conversation with our site, our, our high school leadership. The students returned to full in-person in August 2021. So that's a year and a half ago. And the school put in multiple support structures to help the students to be able to graduate without any modification at all. The only modification at the time we were thinking was the, from the 60 hours of service hours down to 20. Because the, the lack of opportunity during the time when everything was shutting down. As we moving through that year, it is evidenced that the impact on the pandemic was more severe for some than others. So a great deal, number of our students, like I said at the beginning, it looks like 60, 88 was falling behind. But then they're catching up. But there's still about 25 that would not be able to catch up without this last flexibility that we put in place. So it is to the board decision tonight is that if we would want to send them on to a fifth year into an adult school program. That is, that is what we're facing. Or are we giving them this final boost and allow them to earn a diploma and, and move on from here? So it, it is a choice because we did try to, to support from 88 down to 25. But we would like to acknowledge that we don't know the depth of the impact of the pandemic. And maybe this is something that morally we should try.
So for one thing, point of order, it is now 10:35. I'm sorry that I'm five minutes late in letting you know, President Amazola. So when I read, and I know that you read the percentages. But if this is, if this is unduplicated, if that means that 12 of these 25, nearly half are Hispanic. And eight of them are African American. That's 20 out of the 25. That is, it, when we're talking about, you know, pointing out who the pandemic or, or really hurt. We need to, we need to say this, not just in percentage, but 20 out of 25 are Hispanic or African American, are black students. So I need to know, I really need to know whether or not like pushing them onward, graduating them is, is, is right or not. Because I, I do not know and whether or not, like if we even have examples of pushing them to, you know, an adult school program or not, like what are, like what are our outcomes there too? I, I don't know.
Could I just share some anecdotal information? So last year upon the students who were not graduating, we were, we were, we called each student and offered five-year adult school an option so students could graduate. I, I didn't have one taker. So because the counselors and all in the team at the high school has developed this. They know the needs of the students and they want to set them off for the ability to, to community college. So they have each individual student's story in their heart. And this is, this is where this is coming from, to give them the best outcome and the best opportunity that we can. So just because it's just those anecdotal pieces that we've been collecting as we ask the questions that you've asked.
And how many was, was that, did you, did you say, you might not have said?
No, I, I, on my list to call were eight kiddos last year.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have a follow-up question on, on that specifically. At what point in the year were they given options? Was it like the January before the June graduation?
The, the original timing of this particular resolution was actually in early, I'm sorry, in, in, in early November. We were hoping to bring this to the board. But due to a variety of reason, we couldn't. But at that point, we realizing that with the site leaders sharing with information with me as early as early November. We already know that a handful of our students, 88, some of our students will be struggling without any modification to the graduation requirement. And so therefore, as we're moving forward, we're still celebrating the support, that number of 80-some students slowly peeling off. And it is now evident that 25 will be at risk of not receiving a diploma. Now, I could certainly point out example of students who moved on without the diploma and achieving a, a diploma down the line through a variety of opportunities. But I'm willing to bet that with the diploma, it's an easier way to transition into a college program. Without one, the distractions are many. The distraction of not having a diploma, it is something to your sense of who you are, finishing high school, everyone else is cap and gown and you're not. And, and that is not necessarily an instructional thing. It's, it's almost like a, well, I'll stop here before you guys know exactly what I'm talking about.
Just, just to go back to, because I did have a question there before about like whether we see any patterns of like how short they are. Do we know, do we know if it's just the service or if it's all across the board? There's only 25. So I would think that someone would know like what the severity is because asking, changing from 220 credits to 130 credits. Like obviously, like there's, that's a vast difference. We're not, that's, that's not the floor that we're looking at right now because they're in their last semester. I'm assuming that maybe they might have 200 credits. But I, I don't, I, I guess I wish I, you know, that information was, was presented to us as well.
I have to confess, I don't have that information, but I can provide it to the board. Stop the defects.
Okay, it's 10:40. So I, I kind of want to know where we want to go with this. We have six more agenda items. One more very important agenda item that we've been bringing back, which is the inter-district. Do we want to push through? We have one yes. Kent is a yes. Loretto?
Can we cherry pick?
Well, usually what happens is the following. The business cannot be cherry picked. That needs to be approved today. And I guess what we could do is our board business can be minimized, not discussed. With 17.1 and 17.2 and 17.3, those, those are three that we can bench for the future. But it's, so we have two that says push through.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm going to suggest in either case that we table 14-1 about inter-district permits for the next meeting. Only because this is my first chance to have input on it. And looking through it, there's some ed code, I think typos within it as it stands. Some references to some bits of ed code that don't exist anymore. And some other questions that I think merit a longer discussion than I necessarily think we should be having at 11 o'clock. So I, I am fine with pushing through, but I'd like to not do 14-1 tonight.
I, I'd like to ask, because Ms. Montez and Dr. Andalucar were here for that specific item. I'd like to hear if there is an urgency to get this passed. Or DI, if you brought it before us. Because I don't want to halt any progress or any work that needs this. And so I just want to know.
And so, so thank you, President Amazola. We were going to push for approval, subject to some editing and revising that we've actually already done. We aligned it with input and feedback from the EAC. We reviewed similar districts. I would be okay, but I, I feel very bad that my colleagues have, have, have been here for the sole purpose of supporting this. So I, I'd like to, I'd like to ask how they would like to, how they feel, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'd like to, because they've been here since we shared. Ms. Montez and Ms. Andalucar, if you'd like to address.
I guess one of the things. If there's an immediacy permit, we are in permit season, so we're at the point that people are looking for information. They want to know the policies. And we've got Kinder Information Night to January 25th for the district. So we will be presenting on, one of the presentations is for inter-district permits. I guess from our office perspective, and I don't want to speak for Director Montez. But I always like to present information that's going to be accurate at the time they apply on March 1st. So that would be the one immediacy I would see would be just if we want to kind of start the entire cycle with the board policy in place.
Yeah, I think what I would add to that is that if we don't make that change before we put forth this new school year, we can't tell people that the rule changed in the middle, right? So that would be, and so then we're saying, we're actually looking at implementing the policy, not for 22, 23, 24, but then the next year, right? And so we wouldn't want to delay. We, we definitely, all the ed code stuff, Mr. Guerrero, we actually added the, the, instead of abbreviating some of the things in the parentheses, we cleaned all of that up with all the appropriate ed code. So.
With all due respect, I, I get that, but I don't have a copy of that.
Got it. And so. As a public. Yeah, no. And so what, what Dr. Smith said right now is that we could make all those edits that you guys requested. If not, I, I just want to share with you that the reality is that if we don't approve now, we go to those meetings on the 5th. We start presenting and we can't present on new policy that doesn't actually exist. We have to follow the policies that are currently in place. So however you want to go forward, we just want you to know that's kind of where that timeframe is. We brought it forth in November so that we would have enough time. And I completely understand as a new board, you want to, you know, have input and understand everything. This is just where we are with the timeline. Because the, all of the new procedures go in place for, and enrollment starts and the presentations happen in January. They start in January. So we, we are happy to do whatever you guys want us to do. But that, that's the sense of urgency.
So what I hear is on January 25th, the kindergarten classes will start, which start with questions about, can I apply for, for my child to come here on an inter-district? So really, the, the first time you will need this policy to be approved would be in January 25th, right?
Right, because that's what the Kinder.
And we have our board meeting on the 24th. That's the next board meeting. I am okay if we, if we want to do a meeting next week on a Tuesday to discuss this thoroughly, to, to get input from our board, our new board members. If that is something that will be okay with you all.
And, and then would it be, if we had that discussion, would we be able to vote? Would you guys be able to vote on the 24th?
We would vote next week. Oh, so if we meet next Tuesday, we would vote on that Tuesday. We would make any edits.
You mean in two weeks?
No.
Now, she's suggesting a special meeting, like a one-item meeting next week.
One-item meeting. And I honestly want to lump the high school graduation information with that Tuesday meeting. Because I feel that there's information that we don't have. And I'd like for us to go through and think about what is the information we want. And then we'll have both of these items in a special meeting next Tuesday. And it could just be two items, hopefully in our max.
President?
Are you, are you speaking of in the, during the day or in the evening? Because I think we're coming back from the holiday.
Yes.
I know the office will be a little.
And we have El Cap pack. Seventeen.
I, I, I'm very overwhelmed about the prospect of tabling the item that we are two-thirds of the way through. If we, I'd really like to finish this item and have a conversation about the rest of the board meeting after that.
Okay, all right. So if we can have a third board member. Tell me if we should push through, we can push through. And we will discuss, if, we will start the discussion on the inter-district. And if we see that we cannot come to an agreement, then we'll go into a special meeting for next week.
I think Dr. Kent was trying to say, let's finish the item that we're on. And we can still consider having special meeting next week for that item and whatever else, like continue.
I agree exactly what you're saying. I, I agree with you. Okay, that's exactly what she's saying. And what I'm saying is, can I get a third vote? Because I have two saying push through. So meaning at this point to push through the current agenda item, current agenda item, which is, sorry, I don't have my notes on, is.
I will be the third to finish this.
To finish the high school graduation. Thank you. Okay. So let's finish with high school graduation requirement. I believe Kent was asking questions.
What did we do right with the 50 students that were removed from the original 80 red flag list, for lack of a better term?
Thank you. We put support plans, we, we, the high school and the team put support plans in place. And we created credit recovery opportunities and, and, and different pieces. The kiddos on the list here for the 30 that need this alternative are more credit deficient than those others, than the students that were able to mitigate that.
Okay. If we already know that 2024 incoming graduating class is at risk, what are we doing to bring that number to zero? What, we have all spring and summer.
Right.
As if that's a lot of time, but.
I know, we're creating accelerated learning, basically like quick rounds of, of credit recovery, which, you know, which everyone is calling accelerated learning so that students can recapture credits. And that's a conversation we're going to continue to have and share information with the Board of Education about. It's just, it's just these, these 30 children are what keeps me up at night.
Yeah. So here's what I want. It costs $8,768 to go to Santa Monica College for one year. I want to pass this item and I want us to pay those 30 students $260,000 to go to two years of community college. That's what I want us to do. I want us to pay them two years of community college. So I want, I want to ask that to come back. I think that we failed them and that we owe them the two years of community college that, that, that they need to go on and get next.
That's pretty right.
So I, I will be voting in favor of this item.
Okay, um, Getaro?
I, I look at this as flexibility that the state has granted us, given COVID. That it's a tool that they're making available to us. It doesn't mean we have to apply it to all students. Just those who, in our case, it's a tool that we would be potentially passing on to our high school. And they've made a determination, they looked at 88 kids and decided that for most of those kids, this wasn't appropriate. But for a subset of them, it was. So I think it's totally appropriate to do. And if, if we're not doing it, we're effectively withholding diplomas from these 25 kids. Because we want them to go to a fifth year of school. That seems appropriate, according to the high school staff for the majority of them. And they're figuring out ways to do that. But for this 25, it doesn't seem appropriate. And as Mr. Tran pointed out, trying to go on, we don't know that these 25 students will stay in school. We don't know that these 25 students are interested in a fifth year. You know, and so what we're doing is withholding diplomas from them because we want them to follow a particular path. We're making these paths available to them. We're supporting them in whichever path, but ultimately denying a group of students diplomas that are state-recognized and state-approved through their requirements. I think that does them more disservice than anything else. Because when you don't have that diploma, your choices are very limited. And so again, it's not appropriate for every student. It's a tool, it's a tool that I think we should make available to our high school to use and make available to these students. You know, we can talk about some type of post-graduation support that we can continue offering students. But yeah, I, I think it's fine.
Anybody else? I, I do want to ask for clarification, Kent, from Dr. Kent. So my understanding is that California offers two free years of community college. So are you saying on top of that?
Maybe. I want us to talk about it. I don't want us to wash our hands. So, you know, whatever, whatever conversation this board is willing to entertain, I want to have it. I think we owe them more than just reducing the expectations by a lot. And so, you know, may.
Can we ask, can we ask, can we do an interview with these 30 students? I believe it's 30 students, right, total? Can we do an interview with the 30 students and see what is it that they are planning to do with this graduation diploma?
Yes, and that's what we did last year. We created these, sorry, we created these plans for kiddos. The, the team, the counselors, the assistant principals and provided, explained. The team, the counselors, the assistant principals, and provided, explained all of the options, set kiddos up and, and made sure that we were, we were there as a safety net.
Okay. So I am, I am. Mr. Tran?
May I be, just to be blunt, it's our fault. We managed to meet the needs of sixty-five, sixty-six out of eighty-eight. But we can't place the bulk of those credits that is missing by these twenty-five as if their choice. I'm not comfortable saying that, because we don't know to what degree that pandemic hit the students who are African-Americans, who are Latino, who are living in poverty. I don't know to what degree we can say, you should have just pulled yourself up by your own boot strap. Support this, for this year, for this year. I'm arguing that instead of justice, we look for mercy. Give them a chance. I don't have any way of saying, you must make something with the diploma we're granting you, otherwise you won't get it. I'm just saying, at this point, the school have done all they could have done, maybe they could have done more. But there we are, with twenty-five not having that diploma. It's our call. It's, it's, it's your, it's your call at this point. And I would, I would make this statement, we would support the school in every which way we can, so that the class of two thousand twenty-four would not come back with yet another group not making the grade. We're going to build that in and the awareness and the grace that the board is granting us, and I'm hoping the grace that the board will grant us tonight. We translate that into the commitment that two thousand twenty-four graduation class will not be facing the same struggle that we're looking at right now.
So for me, I hear what Dr. Kent is saying, and what I would support is an interview with each of these students who will opt into this lower graduation, ask what is their career path? Because maybe they want to go to a coding boot camp. I don't know. You did say there was a few who are doing well, right? Wait, did you say there was a five percent that were? I'm sorry. I can't, I didn't write it down, and so I'm not going to make it up. So I would like to ask, what is their path? And then please bring that back to the board to discuss how we can support that path.
Yes, Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to add and speak on behalf of the, you know, a few parents that I did get calls from. And they're kind of in their own panic on what they're going to do. They're waiting on this meeting, because they've talked to their student counselors. And so the counselors are waiting for, you know, a decision to kind of be made. So I have received some phone calls from, you know, people that are a little nervous and they're looking forward to kind of a decision tonight. Just thought I'd add that.
Yeah, I think we, we are ready to do a vote. And I, what I'm asking is that we need a follow-up.
Sure.
And the follow-up needs to come to us and we, with the twenty-five career plans and how we plan to support those career plans.
Sure.
And would that be satisfactory?
Yes, and I appreciate the clarification that you brought to my original suggestion. Yes, I do want to hear more about what we can do to support them. So I'm comfortable approving it in the context of that promise and commitment. And it sounds like we have some precedent, because we know what the last year's class that were given one-thirty are doing. I would love to hear what we know already about how they're faring. That'd be a great data set to talk about right away. And did we comment?
So just, Ms. Williams, we, we did get a motion, correct? You have a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, a motion a second. So now, Kim, we have twenty-five participants on Zoom. If anybody would like to raise their hand and provide public comment on this item, this will be the time to do it. Okay, board members, any other comments? Well, I'm going to ask for a vote. Of all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Fourteen-point-one?
Well, let's talk about what we're doing.
Oh. Fourteen-point-one. We have three, four, five, six.